Just in time for the most important event. Anne is a former educator, longtime educator for Volusia County Schools, so if you've been in the school system, you probably know Anne. Former past president, she currently serves on our board as parliamentarian. I can't think of a better qualified person to run this forum as a moderator, and I want to thank her for doing that. Please welcome Anne Smith.
Thank you, Nikki, and welcome to everyone. Excuse the contraption here, but it works. And that's what's important, because the building doesn't. So, we're going to be passing this along, it's going to be, but we're going to be sitting in order, so hopefully that will have things move along as we would like them to. Before we begin, please turn off cell phones. Now, vibrate's alright, as long as they're not on metal, and then everybody over here vibrate. So, turning it off would be bad. Videotaping or recording of any kind of today's forum is only permitted under the following circumstances. The recording must be shown and/or heard in its entirety. A statement at the beginning of the recording must state that the views and ideas are expressed are those of the candidates, not the League of Women Voters of Volusia County, and that the League's involvement is not an endorsement of any candidate. No portion of the forum may be used in a political advertisement, so we ask that everyone in the room please comply with those requests. The views expressed today are those of the candidates, not the League. Our goal is to provide an avenue where citizens can gather information and ask questions to help them make an informed decision at the polls. We are doing this as a public service. I'll begin by explaining the format, which the candidates already know. There will be no opening comment and a two-minute closing comment. I have already determined the order of these comments by drawing of straws. We will begin with questions submitted from the audience in writing and screened for duplication, relevance and balance by Pat Cosby, Pat Drago, and Heather Mullins, who are all members of the League. Joyce Monaco, Sharon LaBeauf, and Fran Porter, that have been handing out cards, will be doing that through the entire duration of the forum, so if you have a question you want to ask, just raise your hand, they'll give you a card and something to write with. Raise your card up, they'll pick it up and bring it up to the screener's table. Candidates will have up to one minute to answer each question, and I will alternate the order of who responds first. At the end of one minute, our timer, Claudia Roth, will hold up the stop sign, and we ask that you finish your thought very quickly and complete your answer. And even though I may not have a microphone, I will stop you, so please cut it out. So, let us get started. One last note. The League of Women Voters of Volusia County is a nonpartisan organization, and we endorse neither candidates nor political parties. It is our goal to educate, as Nikki said, and provide opportunities for the citizens of Volusia County to gather as much information as they can about issues and candidates, so the choices they make at the ballot box are informed choices. One final word to our candidates. Our timer will hold up a sign when you have 30 seconds left when answering your question and a stop sign when time is up. Okay, shall we get started? Yes?
Yes.
Tell them where you can find the information from the candidates on the internet.
I will.
Alright. That's not a big, good idea. Very good questions for the candidates.
I'll explain all of that at the end. Right now, I want to do the questions for the candidates. Question number one, and we, the speaking order is Ms. LaRue will be first, Mr. Bowie second, and Ms. Haynes third. Tell us what observations you have formed of Volusia County schools based on the test results over the last few years, address elementary, middle, and high school.
That is a very interesting question, because we place a lot of stock in that one test. And I think what's important is years ago, we vetted a test called TARC, and that was supposed to align with the new Common Core standards. And then, all of a sudden, we didn't accept that test after we vetted it and we went through that process. Suddenly, we decided we were going to get a new test, and we went through an organization called AIR, and they wrote a new test called a Florida Standards Assessment. This test was written in Utah, which does not match our demographic. I believe this is an unfair test to judge the majority of our students who are not native English language speakers and also receive the large majority of educational support services that we have in our schools.
And thank you for holding your applause. We'll do it when they'll finish.
Good morning, everyone. The question was about observations that I've made, and they include the fact that testing is, in my opinion, the tail that wakes the dog, first of all. There's too much of it, and I think we need to do something about rolling it back and giving teachers more control of what they do in their classroom and how they test their students. While testing is a fact of life, we have to live with that, and we have to use those standards as part of what we do. I think our schools can move to a higher level of testing in terms of the grade that is received. That means there's got to be a greater interaction between the students and teachers, which we must give back to teachers in order to raise our testing scores. They're not going to raise or be raised unless students are learning more about what testing is asking for. And I do believe that our schools, all of our schools, can be A's schools if we focus our energies on what we should be focusing on, and that is that interaction between teacher and student.
Good morning. Several years ago, when I was, had the opportunity to work for R.T. Gallin, his goal was that all of our Title I schools, when he retired, would be As and Bs. They were. Fast forward to now. This year, it was disheartening to look at what the school grades are. Now, I like the other candidates. I don't put a lot of emphasis on what those grades are, but the fact is, that's what's driving the instruction or lack of instruction, because what we're doing is we're worrying about teaching to a test. We're not doing authentic teaching any longer in classrooms at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. We need to go back to authentic teaching. We need to go back to giving teachers the power to know how to meet the needs of their students. We could start the year with a pre-assessment and end the year with a post-assessment, not putting the emphasis on that, but allowing us to see the growth that children make, because every child comes in at a different level. What do we need to know? Where do they start at? How do we address that? And where do we end? Thank you.
Question two. What role do you think charter schools should have in our district? And Mr. Bowie is first.
Charter schools have a place in our school district, in my opinion, if they're focused on working with special populations of children. If they're focused on helping youngsters who have very interesting or tested conditions that need special attention. There is also that opportunity to have regular programs, there's no doubt about that. But I think the charter schools that have been most successful, all those charter schools that are really focused on specifics, they're focused on maybe limited services to students that are classified or tested to be in need of these limited services. However, I do think our charter schools must maintain the same standards as regular schools. They have to meet the same requirements, to be SEC certified, and they have to also have certified staff. I do not believe because a charter school is classified as a charter school, they should get special conditions.
I too believe that charter schools play a role. For example, the Child's Academy located on the old Bonner campus over in Daytona. In Volusia County schools, we closed the doors at our high schools for our young pregnant women. So, Anne Ferguson opened up that charter school to meet a need that we were no longer meeting in our schools. Those women have a right to an education and also receive parenting training. If any of you have not visited that school, I say you need to go visit it. I also believe that if a charter school can open and provide an opportunity that we're not providing, we need to support that. There's a lot of misnomers out there, where people say, "But all of the money's going to the charter schools." Actually, in Volusia County, we maintain a part of that funding. We do not release all of it. If a student earns $14,000, the full $14,000 does not follow them. And that's what a lot of people are speaking about and speaking against charter schools. Thank you.
Question number three. She could stay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's what I was asking.
Thank you. As the other candidates, I do believe that charter schools serve a purpose. I believe there should be a very transparent lottery system, and I believe they should have to follow the same rules that our traditional public schools follow. Each of our students should be supplemented by a charter school, if that means that they can go and receive special services that our traditional schools are not offering. I don't believe they were designed to be a competition with our public schools. We all have a place here, each student deserves different opportunities, and I instead would like to see magnet programs at our schools.
Question number three goes, first question to Jamie, Ms. Haynes, and the question is, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
We can't hear the lady with the microphone.
Okay, so, put it closer to your mouth. Do you believe we have the right leadership in the district? Why or why not?
I'm happy to be first. What I believe is that there are individuals in the district that are in the right place for leadership. I also believe there are individuals in the district that are in the wrong place for leadership. We would not be in the situation we are right now, with 31 of our elementary schools receiving a C grade this year and 947 third graders not passing the third grade reading test, which is heartbreaking, if we had all of the right leadership in place.
The second person should be Ms. LaRue.
I believe we do have some proper leaders in place, but I also believe we have morphed into a district that no longer trusts our teachers to do their jobs. And I believe it is imperative that we have leaders that trust the professionals in the classroom to do what they were hired to do.
Mr. Bowie?
I think leadership is critical to a school district moving forward, and in that I mean, really being a high-performing school district. You have to have leadership in the right places. I think we do have some leadership in the right places. I think it's a matter of including additional leadership, such as myself, and as a school board member, to help be a part and make a contribution to a high-performing school board. Leadership has many opportunities to really gain the confidence of the teachers and students, but you have to keep your students first, and you have to then, of course, supplement or support your next most valuable resource, and that is your teachers. Leadership has its place, and it has to start from the top. If you create a culture that is focused on learning, if you create a culture that is focused on supporting your teachers, I think your results will be what you expect them to be, higher test scores and graduation.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Fourth question, and Ms. LaRue. What is your plan for getting as many academies in the West Volusia High Schools as there are in the East Volusia High Schools?
I believe the first part is getting teacher buy-in. We have to get the teachers who teach those programs ready to go and take on that paperwork that's involved and everything else in place, that our students first. There has to be the want for that program. We have to involve families and students to want to participate in those programs and listen to them. Our programs haven't expanded the same rate because there hasn't been necessarily the drive for that, and we need to make sure that happens. The manufacturing program that took place at Pine Ridge, that happened because of the strong desire of students and families.
Mr. Bowie?
We have to have comprehensive programs at our schools in order to reach and serve all of our students. Any program that is going to allow a student to develop, to learn, to be all that they can be is something we really seriously need to consider. Those fundamental programs that we've always had in our schools, especially arts and music and physical education, aside from the academic areas, are critically important. Adding and supporting those through technology is critical, and I think anytime we have an opportunity to support those kinds of programs through the addition of technology, to enhance the instructional process, to enhance learning, we're doing the right thing. So, I do believe that there is room for comprehensive curriculum, there is room, in fact, there has to be support at the school base level, of course, and of course, the policymaking opportunities that school board members have. It has to be there.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes.
Having lived on the west side of Volusia County now for 32 years, knowing that at one time, we had those vocational training opportunities at our schools on the west side, but we closed them down, I believe what has happened in our district is we have ignored the west side of the county. It's very apparent when you look at, it's very apparent when you look at the form to fill out for the academies, and there is only one academy on the west side of the county that has more than two offerings, which is University High, and it's closed. It's very apparent when Taylor Middle High School has no academies. We have funneled the money and the academies to the east side of the county. I don't believe it's a, "We need them to want or desire." I believe it's, "We made a choice not to place those academies where the largest percentage of our students are living."
Thank you. All right, question number five, and we will begin with Mr. Bowie. What struggles are teachers having today with the Volusia County curriculum?
I think when we have dictates coming top-down to teachers, especially that are unfunded, all of them will be a struggle. When they have to crowd in more time for testing requirements, rather than allowing teachers to actually be comprehensive in their approach to instruction, we have a problem. Anytime a teacher cannot have that freedom to be creative in his or her own way, because there are dictates, and oftentimes, they may have to come up with their own kinds of support mechanisms or support materials, we have a problem. And I think that can evolve itself in any curriculum. I do believe that every child may not be college-oriented, therefore, we have to make sure that we are offering programs that will support those youngsters going to programs that will allow them certification in other areas.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes.
I actually believe that what's happened is we've not provided our teachers, especially at the elementary level, with the resources and the materials they need to educate our children. We've also taken away some of the trust in allowing them to know how to teach, or listen to them and provide them with the training that they feel that they need, instead of a cookie cutter training. A textbook is a resource, which our elementary teachers do not have. At the middle and high school level, if you're teaching Algebra I, Algebra I is still what Algebra I has been, and you have the resources to do that. We need to take the money and place it where it needs to be, which is in the classroom with the children, because every one of us comes to work every day for one purpose, to educate children. They are our number one priority, and the teachers on the front line need whatever they need in order to do that. Curriculum itself is the standards, but we need to give them the resources. We've handwritten modules. It's not working.
Thank you, Ms. LaRue.
We currently have in place modules that we have used for the last couple of years, which I think can be then aligned to the reason why our test scores have dropped so drastically. Teachers need to be passionate about the subjects they teach, which they are, and given a script on what you need to say and how quickly you need to say it, and being told that you've taken too long to discuss a topic is wrong. It is so fun, when I've substituted in the classroom, to get that classroom engagement and see their eyes light up and get that fire in their belly for learning, and to tell them, "No, you've taken five minutes too long and you didn't transition fast enough," is wrong. We are robbing our students of what they need. We have professionals in that classroom, and we need to trust them. As Ms. Haynes said, our curriculum is fine for high school and middle school. They have resources, they have textbooks. We need to do what is right by our students, and that is give our teachers what they need to be the professional educators they are.
Thank you, and this is the last question before closing comments. Ms. Haynes, you'll be responding first. What is at the top of your list in making changes?
It's twofold. The first part is the financial piece. We need to have financial transparency. We need an entire financial audit and overview. We need to know where the funding is being spent. We need to know how it's being spent, and we need to know why it has been directed away from classrooms. Secondly, we need to listen to the teachers. We need to provide them with the resources that they need, the training that they desire, and we need to trust and support and show them respect. Teachers need to be able to be financially compensated for what they do. We need to take a look at what we're asking them to do, and we need to discover where the funding is for that.
Thank you. Ms. LaRue?
I believe teacher retention is our most important thing we are facing in Volusia County. Fifty-four percent of our first-year teachers left our district, most of them citing personal reasons. It is important for us to not just whitewash that. It is very important that we get to the root of the problem and we handle it. We do not respect teachers the way we should. We have school personnel that work countless hours and are not compensated for that as well. We need to support the people that are in the classroom, and we need to make early intervention, which means catching students' learning struggles early on in their careers. We know it in kindergarten. We shouldn't make the problem-solving task team take so long to figure out what's working. We owe it to our students to do better, and I have every intention of standing with our teachers, as I always have, to make that happen.
Mr. Bowie?
I do have, to have a twofold response. There's no doubt that funding is an issue in our school district, and I think funding, whether it's generated locally or coming from the state, has created the tension that we see now between our leadership, our school board, and our teachers. We have to address that issue one way or another. But I too believe that the discourse that has been created between our teachers and our leadership has a tremendous impact, and that has to be corrected. We have to treat our teachers with respect, and we have to show that by making sure they make a decent wage and give teachers that respect that they deserve. After all, next to our students, they are our greatest resource. There's no way we're going to have an effective classroom without having a happy teacher there. There's no way we're going to have an effective school without having administrators who feel that their opinion value and they're having the freedom to run their schools. So...
All right. Thank you very much for the... Now, we're going to have closing comments, and just as a reminder, these are up to two minutes for closing comments, and we will begin with Ms. LaRue.
I feel I should stand for this. I am a parent with a third grader and a sixth grader in our schools. I also have had a child graduate from Volusia County schools. I have been attending school board meetings for five years. I've gone to Tallahassee to ask them to reconsider the district cost differential. I have talked to them about curriculum. I have been there, on the front lines with our teachers, asking to be treated better. This is my passion. I feel it's a calling. I had fellow education advocates ask me to run. I've had friends ask me to run, educators, and most importantly, my family. We are in this together, and I have nothing but great desires for Volusia County. We have the potential. We have wonderful educators in those classrooms, and we need to be supporting them in a way that's beneficial, which I have shown I will do for years. I believe we need to do so much more with early intervention, and I am that person that will make that happen. When I was working summer school this year, I was told by a family that they couldn't get into our VPK program because it was full and all the area schools were full, and yet, she said, "Easter Seals will open a program if they just have a few more students." And so, I took it upon myself that as I had more students call and ask to be enrolled in VPK, to go to Easter Seals Charter School, and guess what? They were able to open a unit this summer. I am committed to doing everything, one for what's right by each student. I chaired the HouseNet Committee, which will bring over $400 million, thanks to voters passing that, into our district for security, for technology, and for building upgrades and building projects. I am committed to this as a volunteer. I am committed to it definitely as a full-time employee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bowie?
Thank you. This is a standing question. I do believe that I have the proven experience and proven successful leadership experience to be really a successful contributor to a high-performing school board. A school board that is sensitive to the needs of teachers, understand the dynamic that must happen between their teacher and their student in their classroom, and understanding how that dynamics lead to learning, and that learning leads to higher graduation rates. I feel that my career has been in preparation for this opportunity throughout, because I've been a classroom teacher, I've been a high school coach, I've been an assistant principal, I've been a principal three different levels, elementary, middle, and high school. I've been a curriculum supervisor, and I've been a district administrator. I can relate to the employees and the professionals in those areas. I know how to listen, and I know how to solve problems solved. I was one of the first Principal of the Year candidates when it started back in 1992 and 93. Well, that's when I became an assistant principal, of the three years before that. Now, I do believe that with the experience I bring to the school board, I do believe that with the level of success I've had and understanding and the ability to relate to all of the professionals at the various level, I'm the one that can be in the best position to make positive decisions that can affect what happens at that level. I do know this, any decision that is made that's not going to be productive for that interaction that takes place between a student and teacher is not a good decision. And we must take care, without doubt, safety, in order to have an effective school district, an effective school and effective classroom, students and teachers must feel safe, and we must treat our teachers with respect. We must make sure our teachers have every opportunity to be what they can be.
Thank you very much. And the last final statement, Ms. Haynes. Put it up very close, because they are struggling hearing you.
I too, like Mr. Bowie, have dedicated my life to Volusia County schools. I have just entered my 32nd year. I've taught at the elementary level, from pre-K self-contained ESE all the way through fifth grade. fifth grade, with the exception of fourth. I tell fourth grade teachers all the time, you've done something I haven't. I've taught at the secondary level, mathematics courses. I've been a teacher on assignment, an academic coach, a reading coach, a Title VI lead teacher. I moved into federal programs as a TOA where I went out and worked with the teachers at the lowest performing schools. And you know what we did? We turned those schools around because we worked side by side and addressed what the issues were that were holding them back. I've moved up, I've managed the grants, I've actually written the $25 million federal grants for Title I. I've done the monitoring and compliance of those grants. I'm used to handling large budgets, overseeing them, following the federal laws, and having perfect audits. I currently supervise a phenomenal team of young people who install technology in our schools. Not only do we install it, we teach the teachers and the students how to use it so we can create blended learning classroom environments, which is where we have to move with our kids. I bring to you today someone who has dedicated their life, raised their own children through Volusia County, and someone that's here to continue to speak for our children. Every meeting I'm in, the question I ask is, is the decision we're making today the best impact for the children sitting in the classroom? Because if it is, it's the best for teachers. Too many times, people that step away from the classroom lose sight of why we're here. What I ask is that you get to know me if you haven't already, learn what I've done. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Let's give a big round of applause to our District One candidates. And if District Three will come up. So there's no need to go over them. I will begin with question one as soon as I get it. And it just got here. So, question one, and again, we've already determined the order and. Yes, and this is the way it is, one through four. Can't even read my own notes. How will you engage and motivate teacher-parent relationships and child and parent relationships with their school for school-for-student success?
Thank you. Teacher and student motivation is something I think that really has to be handled on a classroom-by-classroom basis. What we need to do is to encourage our teachers to, and they will, they'll know their students, they'll see what's going on. The hardest part sometimes is getting the parents involved. And we do that usually through the PTA organizations and to reach out as a district to make sure that parents get involved to see what's going on in their classrooms, see what their children are learning, see what the needs are that, that quite frankly, might need some volunteer donations, volunteers of time. And that's one of the biggest things is that once we get our parents and our students involved, it becomes more like home. So it becomes much more a natural location for them to learn and to develop that love for learning that should last on their entire lifetime.
Thank you. Mr. Lyons?
Good day, everyone. Kerry Lyons. I, motivation between the parents and schools. You know, I've been in the Coast Guard 32 years, just retired July 1. Worked for U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service right now out of my house in Port Orange. Four headquarters up in DC. Run a bunch of my own businesses. So during my Coast Guard career, my last duty was at Port Security Unit 305, a 170-person unit, tactical unit. There's only eight of them in the reserve, so I was the XO there, Lieutenant Commander. So there's only eight XO positions in the U.S. Coast Guard Reserve. I held one of those. 170 members were responsible for landside, shoreside, security. I taught all those members, taught them about education, how to shoot guns, how to save their lives, how to save other people's lives. And I went around, I worked with them every day, mentoring them, meeting their parents, awarding awards. I'm there in the mix with them and that's what I'm going to do with Volusia County Schools' kids and parents. Active involvement, active engagement. And the two greatest things that I think are important are responsibility and accountability. And we'll talk more about that.
Thank you. Ms. Cuthbert?
Good morning, everyone. One of the greatest things teachers and parents and community members can do is engage with each other. We have fairs, there's always fall activities, there are events called back fairs. We have community meetings, get chamber involved, introduce business leaders to the teachers who connect with their students' potential. And we're talking about, just not elementary, but high school. We need to have interactive communication between business, community, teachers, and students. When that occurs, when you create an event so everybody can meet face-to-face, learning can take place. We have to have the room for thought, for interaction, and progress. So as we meet all of each other, as students are exposed to the outside world, their learning will only increase.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson?
Good morning, everybody. One thing we know with certainty is higher academic achievement comes when parents are actively involved in their students' classrooms. The statistics are there and it's well-supported. So in this question, how will we engage and motivate our teachers with our parents and our students and bringing them all together? That burden lies on us to create and facilitate methods to make that happen. Technology is our easiest friend. Even last week, when I had Meet the Teacher, there were questions coming up. I saw numerous posts on Facebook, where is Meet the Teacher? How do I get there? So number one would be driving technology changes to make that an easy conduit to facilitate those relationships between teachers and the parents. Number two, ensuring that people like me, board members, are at these events and actively participating and listen to the voice of the teachers and the students and the parents at the same time, so we can carry their messages forward. When they see action, they will become more involved.
Thank you. All right, question number two, Mr. Lyons, you answer first. The state of Florida uses third-grade test scores to predict future prison growth. 937 third graders did not succeed in this year's reading assessment. What will you do to provide for these students' successful future?
I will sit down and I will read with those students. I love reading. Reading got through my life. I'm not good in math at all, so, you know, you've got to go to those skills that work for you and apply them. And that's pretty much what I've done all my life. And I have, and everybody's, not everybody, but I've heard people talking about the kids, raising their kids. And I told my daughter I wasn't going to bring her into this, but let's just say I've got someone who looks a lot like me and she might, she is doing exactly what this question is, in another county, because this county doesn't pay enough money. So that is why, one of my three things is, I'm going to raise teacher pay. So let me, we're going to have a good time.
All right. Ms. Cuthbert, same question, please.
First of all, Volusia County needs to know what's on the test. So many times, the FSA. Usually my teacher voice. Thank you, sorry. We have to pay more attention to what is on the test. A lot of times, the FSA is not known to teachers. When I taught Advanced Placement, I always knew the questions so I could address the skills. The skills need to be known so the teachers can address the skill level. We also need to be able to have the appropriate resources, analyze what we used the year before, so we can improve and change. We have to adapt. The one constant in education is change. We have to be able to have the assessments made to see where the strengths and the weaknesses are. So as these children move on into fourth and fifth grade, not only do they get the reinforcement in third grade and fourth grade, but it continues throughout. They need to be monitored to make sure that they do not go wavered in any of this.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson?
So the first thing about this question, third graders and test scores for future prisons, is stunning. This room made a gasp. So the first thing would be question that statistic. As an attorney and an engineer, that's where I start, so I'm going to start with questioning that. Second, if there is a true correlation there, then it's about building systems and processes to ensure that it doesn't happen. I personally believe every child has a bright future ahead of them. I'm a father of five. My kids are different. Each one of them is different and each child needs different things to succeed. A blanket statement such as this is not something that's going to drive success or make huge change in our future. We need to focus on the individuality and the needs for those kids and at the same time, ensure the curriculum's in place that supports all of our children, no matter who they are.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt? Same question.
Any time to pass the money?
Of course. You don't start, it starts when you talk.
The third-grade reading scores are critically important and even Dr. Hillen, one of the most recent meetings, said that, you know, he didn't know much about reading, but he did know math and science and you couldn't do math or science if you didn't know how to read. So it really draws out that this is very important to our students. Now, I don't think teaching to the test is the answer, but we do know what we expect. We have the state standards. We know what is expected to be delivered to our students and there's no reason in the world why we can't hit those standards. I think we've got to go back and look at our curriculum and look at our resources available to our elementary school teachers. We saw this year, almost a total collapse in our elementary school grades. And we can talk about, you know, the unfair test all you want, but it's the same yardstick that is measured across the state of Florida. So if we look at our grades in relationship to Collier County or Orlando or whatever, it's still a valid yardstick. And the trouble of it is, is we have to hit that target better and we can do it and we will do it.
Thank you. Ms. Cuthbert, question number three. What role, what role do you think charter schools should have in our district?
Charter schools are a very important part in our district. They do address the needs of a special group. I have tutored at Child's Academy. I've been to two of their graduations. Those ladies are phenomenal, along with their, their children who are also being educated because there's no stress going on. We need to be able to support the classroom, no matter what it is, whether it's private, charter, or public. Every child needs to be supported in the classroom. We do have some wonderful charter schools in our district. They are addressing the needs of their children. What I do think is that we need to have similar accountability and flexibility with curriculum. We need to be, because what's happening is the state is setting us up for too much competition. We need to be fair for all of our students. All of the students have to have the same availability to resources and monies. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
So the question, what role should charter schools have in our district? They should have an important role. First and foremost, charter schools are public schools and the opportunity to look at those charter schools and see what works and does not work is the greatest benefit that we can have. When we see our charter schools not as competitors, but as collaborators, we have an opportunity to make improvement. The beauty of a charter school is, a program can be tried on a micro scale and instantly rolled out with less bureaucracy and new ideas can be tested. The performance results come back much faster, so it's a faster feedback loop that provides that. The district then can take a look at those charter schools and see what is working and adopt the same types of programs. So when we stop seeing them as competitors, taking students and moving money, and see them instead as friendly collaborators that can teach us better ways, our charter schools will succeed and our public schools will succeed from the benefit from those. Thank you.
Thank you.
The role of charter schools in our district has been pretty important over, well, since charter schools have got started. We have the Child's Academy, as was mentioned in the earlier session that deals with unmarried women. We have the Richard Milburn Academy, which many people don't know about, but Richard Milburn takes on students who just don't thrive in a large institution such as a Spruce Creek or a university where you have almost 3,000 students on campus. And here you have more individualized instructions that is aimed at getting these students to earn their full diploma. We have the Easter Seals Charter, which works with more of our younger kids. So our charters have a role in the community. The whole idea behind charter schools was to be innovators and to come up with something that maybe wasn't addressed in the larger public institutions and to be a little bit more flexible. And so we have seen that in the past. We have always had charters that want to start in this county and that will probably continue to happen.
Thank you. I remind the candidates that people are having a problem hearing you in the back and let you get that microphone up close. Mr. Lyons?
Ms. Ma'am, ladies and gentlemen, charter schools, got it. I'm not up here electing to build new charter schools, hold them accountable, let's see what's going on with it. And like Mr. Nelson said, on the stats, correlation, all this stuff about what's going on, I want to do, you know, if you want to look at what I put on my answer, it was on the internet on the website, and they'll give you the address after this meeting, is, on charter schools, show me some successes. Show me some studies, make sure there are, that a study's done, that there's a statistical significance in the difference between the performance of our public schools and these charter schools. And there may be causation, correlation, but correlation is not causation. So charter schools, we need them, that's another tool, toolbox. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Question number four, we will begin with Mr. Nelson. Do you believe we have the right leadership in the district? Why or why not?
First and foremost, no. That's why I'm running for school board. So we'll start right here. I'm running for school board because I believe I bring the type of leadership that's needed. I have five kids, two of them have already graduated from Spruce Creek High School, but I have three children still in our schools and I'm here to advocate on their behalf. Across the district, though, we have excellent, incredible teachers and staff that every day work to support our students and drive forward with the mission of delivering a quality education. There's rules in place that they've got to abide by, but there are teachers that are standouts at each of the schools. So from that standpoint, yes, we have excellent staff and we have individuals in the team that are excelling and we need to look to them for the type of leadership that we can use to expand. At the administrative levels, we need to reexamine and at least evaluate and be fair across the spectrum and we need to stop changing our methods of evaluation year over year. We need to have consistency in how we evaluate our superintendent as we move forward each year and ensure that the leadership's adequate.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt? Same question. Put yours up, they can't hear you.
I'm a little bit concerned about the leadership in the district right now. We have seen the trend continue over the past few years of our school grades declining. Our district grade is still at a B, but we are the lowest of the total scores of any of our surrounding counties. And it used to be that Seminole County was always number one, Volusia was number two, and then you had the other counties following behind. That's how far we've gotten off the mark. We've seen teacher retention has dropped and that's an indication of what the leadership is doing. If we don't provide a positive place for people to work, they're going to find someplace else. We have seen a shuffle of principals and assistant principals. And that also indicates that there are some issues going on with how we put these people in place, how we train them, and how we evaluate them. I think that all needs to be looked at and I have the experience and I can lead that effort.
Thank you. Mr. Lyons?
So I've been in business 20 years at least. Grew up and my dad worked in business, hanging gutters, carports, all that kind of stuff in Texas. Joined the Coast Guard year out of high school because I tried college, wasn't working for me. Responsibility, accountability. I keep it simple. We've got five board members, you pick five priorities. One person can have grades, one person can have budget. I'll take security, two other ones, throw them out there. They get rated and ranked, just like teachers do, just like staff does. Performance plans, yes. And then your superintendent, guess how he gets evaluated? Also, on those five points. Now, if those five points aren't successful, you know, this is where you hold accountability, okay? This is your opportunity to hold folks accountable for what they are responsible for. You talk, you hear about the budget money's flying out the window, the grades are down the drain, and people are, you know, you've got, people are up here saying, well, we need to audit and see where the money's going. And then five minutes later, they're saying, oh, I know where the money's going, I'm a professional.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Ms. Cuthbert?
Truth is tough. Truth is tough.
Is there a challenge for leadership in our district? Is there a challenge for leadership in our district? Absolutely. We have to make sure we have the right person in the right place at the right school and at the right level. A principal who is really good at the elementary level may not be as effective at a secondary level. So we must make sure that we have the right people at the right place. And if they are not, then we need to move them, which is cause some movement. Also, because deferred retirement option plan dropped, went into effect in 2011, 2012, many teachers did leave as well as administrators. So we had to fill in new positions, which affected a lot of people who, who were either transferring to fill the empty spaces. We have to hold everyone accountable and it's teachers as well as administration from the top, very top down, which is why I helped rewrite the evaluation for the superintendent to make it more transparent, more specific and less subjective and more objective. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt, you begin with question five. What role do you think technology should play in the classroom? Be specific.
Well, over the course of the last probably 10 to 15 years, we've seen a rise in the growth of technology in the classroom. There have been individual devices. We had the bringing our own technology for a while. We have spent money bringing in more technology that students can use and it's one thing to have the tool, but we also have to know how to use it. And sometimes that involves training our teachers on how to use the technology to deliver the lessons. It has also helped us with our communication with our parents through the parent portals. Many times, parents will understand what's going on. If they go up to the parent portal, they can see what the homework assignments are, they can see the progress that the student is making. I think another thing that we have, have available to us, but we really haven't used is if we have an excellent teacher over on one side of the county who maybe teaches a subject that isn't a wildly popular course, maybe Latin, and you have people over on the other side of the county that wish to take Latin, but there may not be a teacher over there, why can't we use the technology to link that teacher with those students across the district?
Thank you. Mr. Lyons?
Yes, ma'am. Technology, I have to say at the cutting edge of technology, because I'm in the real workday world, I train people, I educate people, I develop national level policy, I develop policy and training and educational training for the Department of the Interior. Also do it for US Coast Guard. And technology, I'm all about, one of my big things, I want to level the playing field for our students across Volusia County, not just my district. What I want to do, let a student come up with an app for the stock market, because what I'm gonna do is get all the kids involved in the stock market. And how am I gonna do that? Like third, second grade, third grade. Resource management should be the core curriculum, business resource management, natural resource management, it could be home resource management. As long as you know that, you can manage your life. So they'll learn about the stock market, world, global markets, because you need to know that stuff. I don't care if you're a plumber, I don't care if you're a PhD, whatever you do is great, I do care. But I can get you success. What, you give them the tools, success, they're having it for the rest of their life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question to Ms. Cuthbert?
No doubt about it, we live in a technological world that is ever-changing. The technology in the classroom should be used as a tool to be integrated with the curriculum. It needs not to be the center part, but the supporting part of all curriculum because nothing can replace the teacher. The emphasis on STEM is extremely important, as well as STEAM. We have a charter school who sends, who participates in STEM, might have seen their picture in the newspaper, identifying with NASA. As we relate and collaborate with one another and as we have in our district, Edgewater Public School is the first STEM-certified elementary school in the state of Florida and as we incorporate more schools into technology, we will also be able to follow and fulfill our vision of having a 21st century school because whatever happens, we have to make sure we adapt and we have to have personnel here to make sure that they can keep us updated.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson, your question.
Technology in the schools is a double-edged sword. I own a software company. I've owned one for 20 years and yet I'm up here with pen and paper, taking notes as we go through these questions. I have a paper calendar. So at the root, understanding basic skills and having basic foundation is a requirement. I had a chance to teach chemistry for a year at Deltona High School. I used a combination of my blackboard and PowerPoints. PowerPoints are great because they allow me to repeat lectures and keep consistency throughout the day, but at the end of, at the end of the day, when an explanation was required, the blackboard was the key to delivering a unique message to those students. As our kids move out into the real world, they have to understand technology, but the core has to be in place. Technology allows the teachers to deliver consistent contact, stay in touch with students, spread the word and spread messages much faster. So there's a benefit, but it's not the end-all. It's not the silver bullet to fix problems and raise grades. The core curriculum in teaching is what does that for us.
Thank you. Mr. Lyons? What is at the top of your list in making changes in the district?
Well, can anybody take a guess at that? It might be security, ma'am, because has anyone heard of my as low hierarchy needs? Okay, let's start with something really simple, security. So, you know, talking about PowerPoints, I've used PowerPoints too, you know. Down at US Southern Command, I was the intelligence director of J-2 for the US Coast Guard, combat command, US Southern Command. I worked with DEA, working with ICE, you know, it's not a good word, working with all the inter-agency folks. That's in the days when we were hunting down El Chapo. We used PowerPoints as a tap table. Put a bunch, I'm a political scientist, social scientist, put all the data in this tap table. So we're briefing senior leaders, briefing the current chief of staff of the POTUS, that's who I worked for at the time. He was running, he was running US Southern Command, Kelly, I worked for him. So you would hit that tap table and you could see where all of these bad guys are, their faces.
Thank you.
You could see all their arms, their weapons.
Your men are up.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Security, you gotta keep teacher staff, everyone safe.
Ms. Cuthbert?
Our priority for change should be the classroom and anything and everything that supports it, that's teacher salary pay. We need more funding, discretionary funding to support our staff, especially our teachers and their supporting staff like the parents and the clerks. Everyone needs to be able to be part of that. We need to be able to have the flexibility for teachers to express their, to be able to choose their own resources that they deem most important to meet their students' needs. It's important to support the classroom when you have administrative help as well. That has to be funded and the appropriate resources. So as we look ahead in this new year, we need to make sure that anything that affects the classroom, we have to modernize it, fund it, make it a priority because if it is not, then we lose our student achievement.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson?
The top of the list in making changes in the district, first and foremost, we need to look at our culture. We need a culture of collaboration and one that promotes a focus on the reason we are here, which is to deliver a high-quality teaching and learning environment to our students. When we've got our culture aligned and the mission is in place, everything else will fall into step behind that. The opportunity after that is to develop additional programs, to make sure that our students are gonna have access to meaningful, well-paying jobs, whether or not they choose to go to college and need that education first or go directly into the workforce on graduation. We understand that the product that we're delivering is that high-quality education, everything else will fall behind it. We can then focus on our associates, our teachers and our staff, and we can make sure that we're paying attention to the shareholder, our taxpayers, and our teachers and staff are part of our taxpaying base also.
Mr. Schmidt?
I think overall, it comes down to the district needs to listen better. It needs to listen to our teachers, find out what's going on in the classroom and find out what's successful and what isn't and adopt changes to that. I think we need to listen to the community better. We need to find out what sort of a product is the community looking for with our graduates and how can they fit right into the workplace? Are there things that we need to realign with what we're turning out for our graduates? I think we also need to go in-depth through the budget. There's a large pile of money every year that, that comes to us through your property taxes and through state aid and I'm not sure that we go in-depth enough to find out exactly how that's being spent. There were some pretty amazing figures in the budget presentations I saw, for example, a 10% increase in district administration funding. And that, that doesn't make any sense because we didn't get 10% more dollars from the, from the state. So we need to go back in-depth and find out what's going on there. And we also need to work on improving our grades.
Thank you. All right. We are on the final closing comments and I will remind everyone, these are two minutes and we will begin in the order we drew initially, which would be, Mr. Schmidt, you have two minutes to close. You may stand, but if you use the microphone.
Thank you. How's that? As I just said, what we need to really focus on is we need to get this district moving in the right direction. We've gone backwards over the course of the last few years. We need to improve our school grades, we need to improve our performance, we need to listen better to the stakeholders. That includes the teachers. They're the ones who are actually on the front line, they know what's going on and we need to listen to them and value their comments. We're not doing that right now. We also need to listen to the business community. A lot of times, people don't even realize what we offer our students in our current curriculum, when they find out, they're very surprised by what we do. But we can also use that to link into offerings they have. For example, some of the trade unions have journeyman programs in electrical work, is one I'm well aware of, and also in welding. What do they need so that kids who choose to go that route have the skills necessary so they can slot right in? And then we also need to go back and listen to our students. What are they looking for? And then if they're asking for help, we need to help them guide a pathway to their success. Now, over the course of the last 30 years, I have been married to a school teacher, my daughter graduated from our local schools, I've been very involved as a parent and as a volunteer through all those years and as a past school board member. I am very invested in how well Volusia County Schools does. I want to see us succeed, I want to see us get back to the top of our surrounding counties again, where we used to be. And I would really appreciate your vote this August.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Lyons, two minutes.
Test, test. All right. So what are we gonna tell you here now? Yeah, I already heard. Let's see. All right. Wasn't a good student in Texas. I won't tell you what they used to do, bad kids. But I did manage to go to school. I'm a non-traditional student on my fourth chapter of my doctorate of public administration. Before I got out of Coast Guard, I was at University of Georgia, Associate of Science, Electronics Management, because I became an electronics technician with Coast Guard. Then I got my AA here in Seminole Community College, because I got out of Coast Guard, moved to Sanford, AA. Got my BA in Political Science, UCF, and an MBA at UCF, Master's of Public Administration. Went and got Coast Guard's down for a two-year tour, was up in Washington DC, Bowling Air Force Base, Defense Intelligence Agency, got a Master of Science in Strategic Intelligence. And then I went to South Comm, that's where I got my intel stuff. Working with the warfighters, truly, you know, I mean, women, the old, over men and women, and really down the front lines. All right, so when I was in Sanford City, I don't know, it was 94, 97, 93, 97, I was on the Sanford City Commission at Orlando International Airport, which y'all might have heard about. That was me. I was the District Three City Commissioner. That was my district, it was a regional airport for them. There's also a company there called Waste Management. I worked with them and right now, they've got a super center, training center, where they train drivers to drive trash trucks, because there is a gap of, we got all kinds of people who need jobs, let's get them trained. I know how to do that, I'll make that happen. Talk about education, I'll give them education, I'll give them real-world training.
Thank you.
I'll hold people accountable, make sure it's done, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons.
Thank you all.
All right. Ms. Cuthbert, closing statement, two minutes, please.
Thanks to the legal women voters for inviting us all here this morning. I'm a 26-year veteran educator, I taught high school English at New Smyrna Beach High School, coming in, participating in the pilot program, switching from junior high, senior high to middle school, high school. My children were third and fourth grade, they participated in the first pilot program of extended day. I was part of the early 90s, the tech prep movement and career academies. I was part of the movement for CTE, which started in the mid-'90s and helped develop career technical education. As I taught, I was always part of an academy. We, my husband and I have three children graduates of Volusia County Schools. We have six grandchildren who are presently in Volusia County Schools. We have a major stakeholder. Four years ago, when I was elected to the school board, Volusia County was a C district, it's now a B. Four years ago, beginning teacher salaries were making around 36, now they're approaching 39. We have been able to be successful in raising those salaries. Is it satisfactory now? Absolute not. We still need to continue to work to increase it. This year, we've had a dual enrollment expansion, more vocational opportunities, welding and electronics are being offered to our students. Across the street from New Smyrna Beach High School is a new CNC machine, so our students can cross the street to participate in machining classes. We need to be able to continue our expansion of the Manufacturing Academy that is currently at Pine Ridge. We have a collegiate academic program that has, is being piloted and went into effect at Seabreeze as well, I believe, at Deltona High School. It is now expanding to New Smyrna and several other schools. We need to continue to improve not only our academic, our vocational or academy classes because it is all about the kids, isn't it? It truly is. And in communication, we always have those conversations with our communities. We've had, sorry, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Linda. And Mr. Nelson?
Sorry.
First and foremost, thank you for being here this morning. I appreciate your time. Even though it's the constituents of District Three that will elect me, I will serve all of the students of Volusia County. There's 63,000 students and the district is the largest employer in the county with 7,000 employees and it's important to remember that. I get asked, why are you running for school board? Because I have children in our schools. I was at Target last weekend buying school supplies and this afternoon, I'm gonna be going through my school supply list and filling out paperwork to make sure my boys are ready for Monday morning. I'm there because I believe I have the experience that I've learned professionally to step into this board and lead and make change and develop culture that will help our schools move forward. We need to raise our school grades. When people look at buying homes, school grades are in the top five attributes that someone looks at. We have good schools, we have good homes, we have good people coming to our community. Our students are looking for jobs. When they graduate, they expect to have a quality education that will deliver a job that they can go to work and earn a living, not go to work in a fast food industry, but find a career. So I'm up here to try to deliver and change policy so that, number one, we can have meaningful jobs for our students on graduation. If they need to have the foundation to go on to secondary education, that will be in place. First and foremost, we have to deliver a high-quality education. Number two, for fiscal responsibility. We need to examine the budget, top to bottom. The taxpayers are our shareholders and the stakeholders, but so are our teachers. They have students in our school district and are taxpayers just like we are. And the third item is security. We're all sensitive to security. When I see my boys leave each morning, I expect them to come home to me at the end of the day. And one of the things I'm highly sensitive to is what can we do to improve security in our schools and make sure our children will come home safely? Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we have. And, and I know that many questions have been turned in and this is one. And you may have had a question that wasn't answered. I'm sure that the candidates would be more than happy to speak to you after this is over if you had a burning question that was not addressed. So please make sure you do that. So please make sure you do that. All right, question number one, and we will begin with Ms. Johnson. What do you think would be the most effective move to ensure that teachers are provided with the necessary tools needed to help students succeed in the classroom? After all, teacher's success equals student success.
Thank you. We, the first thing we need is conversation with the teachers, what do they actually need? Did you see the school list that came out? That wasn't from your teachers, that was from Tallahassee. So we also need the budgeting, the funding, DCD is the district cost differential, we sent a dollar, they sent back ninety-six cents. That equates to ten million dollars being stolen from our Volusia County Schools. So, um, we definitely need funding. I would like to see an adopt a school program, a classroom program, we've started adopt a school. I'd like to see an adopted classroom program that parents and community members can come in and give money to the teachers for a monthly budget. It could be as little as twenty-five dollars, and they could buy rewards, they could buy supplies, and they wouldn't have to take it out of their own money.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, my name's Robert, uh, thank you so much. Uh, I would like to see, uh, the parents, I'm sorry, the students and also the teachers, uh, to sit down together and come up with different methods. For example, I worked with the method at a community center where I was able to, uh, take care of kids who had a lot of trouble with mathematics. And we were able to be very creative and make things very relative. For example, uh, we were able to, to get, uh, like advertisements and be able to get prices and sell prices and be able to put those things together and make them like real world. So when kids learn and they see that things are real world, it kind of snaps in, and now that the light bulb comes on. So the kids have to make sure, and the teachers make sure that whatever they're teaching, the kids really understand it and is relevant to them. And if they understand that, they've grasped it, and they'll do an excellent job.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne.
Uh, my name's Irving, I'm running for school board, District Five. Uh, the question was about tools needed in the classroom, and, um, while we've spoken about things, we need to start talking about curriculum. We're using an unvetted curriculum that don't give our teachers in the elementary schools math or English books. This is the reason why our kids failed. We are using a curriculum that we made up. So let's start off by giving our stu-, our teachers the tools they need to teach our children math and English, let's start with that. All of these other ideas about getting things and partnerships, I am all for it, I've actually brought partnerships to our area. But we need to start with listening to our teachers and what they need, okay? Because if they do not have math and English books and have closets full of old, brand-new books sitting in closets, okay? How could they educate our children? They can't. So I would say that we need to start asking our teachers what they need instead of trying to figure it out for them. Thank you.
All right, the next question, we'll begin with Mr. Mann. With the amount of teacher turnover, teachers leaving Volusia County to work in other avenues. How do you propose we could retain and recruit qualified, certified teachers to teach our Volusia County students?
That's a great question, I just got through reading an article on LinkedIn, and it said that people don't quit jobs, they quit their bosses. So that means we got to make sure that up top, the things up top are really the right things, and that the teachers are getting the tools that they need so that they can be successful in class. And as, and as we teach, uh, the, those students, we got to make sure that we equip those teachers, not just with, uh, the, the technology. But also, we equip them with the, with the time and the power that they need to really teach their class the way that it needs to be teach. So with that method, we'll make sure that we recruit teachers, teachers that are flexible, uh, teachers that are innovative, teachers that can go ahead and touch those kids in many different ways. Because all kids learn different ways, and we got to make sure that all those ways are addressed, thank you.
Mr. Cologne, the same question.
So I'm going to focus that question on District Five. On average, and studies show that it takes a principal about three years to get settled. In our fifteen schools right here in Deltona Enterprise and Osteen, we've had over a hundred and ten principal and assistant principal transitions in the last forty years. As Mr. Mann says, people look for better working conditions. People go to places, not so much for the pay, one percent, two percent, that's really not a lot of money. We're losing our teachers to working conditions, number one. Number two, I am the only candidate who has sat in on a union, uh, negotiation, and I am not endorsed by the union by any means. And the way that they are being treated by the attorney that the district has hired, I have never heard another human being speak to anybody like that. So until the district takes our se-, teachers seriously and listens to our teachers, okay? We are never, ever going to advance, and I'm sorry I sound so angry, but let me tell you something, the way that man spoke was terrible.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, same question.
Retention of teaching?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was listening.
Yes, it was.
So that's the million-dollar question, how do you, how do you talk somebody into a career that we've sucked the fun out of learning and teaching? How do we do that? We have legislated teaching to death. I actually sat with a legislator and I said, "Do you think you're smart?" And he said, "Well, yeah," he's a mathematician and an attorney, and I said, "Then why do you feel the need to legislate how teachers teach if you and I are okay?" We've got to give it back to the teachers. We've got to quit tying their salary to tests. We've got to quit tying everything to these grades. We've got to let the teachers teach. When I grew up, you took the same test in the beginning, the middle, and the end of the year, and then the teacher decided if you progressed well enough to go on. That's what we need, we need to let them teach because they've been trained to teach, and they need to be paid better. We can't pay our football players and our movie stars more than we pay our military teachers, law enforcement, and fire people.
Thank you very much. Thank goodness, I don't need you. All right, Mr. Cologne, third question. There seems to be a discrepancy regarding the amount and type of academies offered in Deltona Southwest Volusia. How do you plan on bringing more opportunities to our area?
Well, let's start off with, I'm the first person, I'm the only person at this table right here that's brought anything to Volusia County as a, or the west side, as it relates to academies. I am the chair of the Academy of Pine Ridge High School, I am part of the, uh, board at Deltona High. With that being said, what started as a phone call, can you come to my classroom, turned into can we have an internship? Turned into a partnership where Florida Hospital became the official healthcare champion of Volusia County Schools, guess where that started? Right here. I am intimately involved, we've tried to expand our programs, I've run into the obstacles with the district saying, "No, you can't do that." It is evident that when twelve programs are on the west side and twenty-nine are on the east side, Houston, we have a problem. We've created this vacuum, we've created this vacuum where our students are not being treated well. And why does this matter? Well, Volusia County School students that are part of academies are a ninety-four percent graduation rate versus our county seventy-six percent. It works, our students are set out there to fail.
Thank you, the same question, please, Ms. Johnson?
Well, I think we should.
So, there is a discrepancy, part of that discrepancy comes from business partnerships. Eastside has more wealth, let's be honest. Um, the west side in Deltona, we actually have, um, we are all, every school is a Title I school for free reduced lunch, every school. So we are a poorer side. Um, yes, there are relationships with business, absolutely. I found out that we weren't allowed to get in the land hospitals, so I created a relationship with that administrator and got our students in there. I was on the, I was actually the chair when we created the partnership with the hospital. We, um, I reach out, we've created relationships with, um, the communities, we met with cities now. We, we've never done this in the history of Volusia County Schools, and we are doing it because we recognize there has to be more. Um, I'd like to see Pine Ridge start teaching adults at night. Let's teach the parents so we can bring more, more people here that's making a living wage. We've got to turn our thinking around, we have to find the teachers, you can't just teach an academy.
Mr. Mann?
Well, I think we should, uh, do our research before we start saying what people are not doing. As I was a commissioner for the West Volusia Hospital Authority, I was able to contact Pine Ridge, and I got with their principal and their printing program. And they were able to redo all of our literature, all of our trifles, they proposed so many things to help us advertise for the West Volusia Hospital Authority. And they did a terrific job, from bus wraps to, uh, brochures, uh, to websites, you, you name it, they did it. And I was able to be, uh, to have the vision to look out and get our schools involved, and I used Deltona High to do that, and that was great. And also, me as engineer, I had to engineer at the Kennedy Space Center, I work with union people all the time, so I don't just go to one meeting, I'm with them every day. I give them pre-test briefings, and union people are some of the best workers in the world, they get our nation's special program and space program to be number one in the absolute world, thank you.
All right, question number four, uh, we will begin with Ms. Johnson. What role do you think charter schools should have in our district?
I'm absolutely a person that parental choice for schools. I think that the parent knows what their, what best school would fit their child. Um, I do think that, that Tallahassee needs to take off the chains from public schools as they've done with charters. I think it needs to be equal footing, because when Volusia County was a charter district, we were an A district. So what they've done is, we were just recently enforced to have recess, which I align with, the charter schools were not. So, the discrepancy is amazing in what we're doing. The DCD, we need the funding, we need the funding, it, it impacts charter schools as well, the funding. It, it's not that they're sitting overflowing with money, but whatever that kid, if they get a smaller environment, I went to Richard Milburn's Academy every year. And I've spoken every year, I have, the last four years, sorry. I've also went to, we started the Children's Legacy Scholars Academy at the Children's Home, because those children's needs were not being met in the public school.
Thank you very much, next, Mr. Mann?
The charter school role is secondary or third dairy, primary should be Volusia County Public Schools. I'm a big fan for the public schools, I want all the money to stay there, I want every single penny, every single dollar to be in the public schools. I would like to see that the public schools will be able to expand their programs and do things that they can accommodate everybody. And that those charter schools don't even have to exist, uh, per se. So I, I think that we have the funding for that, I think we can innovate and do those things, and I think everything can happen right there under that one roof. Those teachers that are doing well at those charter schools, perhaps that's someone that we can look into, and perhaps they can get a job with Volusia County Public Schools, maybe that's something they can do, thank you.
Mr. Cologne?
So I think the first thing we have to realize is education is no longer one size fits all. Failure to innovate is going to cost our district a lot of money, okay? In our district, right now, District Five, we have ten elementary schools, nine of which are C schools. Ivy Han Charter School is in our community. How can I say to Ivy Han, "You are not welcome," as they feel, seeing as a school board member has never stepped foot there? And tell those kids, "You guys are doing a great job." And tell them, "They're not doing a great job when our schools are failing, when they're using a curriculum that's working," how can I do that? I'm sorry, it's not practical, okay? So with that being said, I do think that we need to improve our product, instead of worrying about what they're doing. The reality is that a lot of that's being handled at the state level, not even at the local level anymore, okay? We need to worry about what we're doing and the things we can control, and continue to advocate for our kids, but improve our product.
Thank you very much. All right, question number five, we will begin with Mr. Mann. Do you believe we have the right leadership in the district, why or why not?
Well, leadership needs to be improved, so the ultimate answer to that is no, I don't believe the right leadership is there. I believe that I'm a person who can add to that leadership with my skill set, which I think is a special, uh, skill set. I'm an engineer, I'm designed to solve problems, that's what I get paid to do. And not only can I solve problems, I'm able to look at data and look at problems and really come up with options to be able to address the things that are really wrong. Uh, there are people that are not qualified to do that, engineers have that special skill set. And with that, I also have a different attitude as well, because I come from Volusia County Schools, I was a student of Volusia County Schools. I was that kid who was dropped through the cracks, and somehow, if I listened to the school, I wouldn't be an engineer today. So I'm here to let everybody know that everybody does have a chance, and it is possible. Even for a kid who did poorly in the beginning, he can really do great at the end and do great things, and he can do things that others only dream to do, like I do by working at the Kennedy Space Center, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne, same question.
Insanity is defined by doing the same thing over and over again expecting a different outcome. The reality is that what's going on right now is not working. What CEO of a company will continue to be the CEO of a company when the gains are not there, when the money is being lost, when our teachers are leaving by the hundreds? What CEO continues to be there? With that being said, I do think that we have serious issues with the leadership. However, I am an out-of-the-box thinker, let's go figure out what's working somewhere else in a like district. Let's go figure out what is going on, what are they doing differently? And can these leaders adapt? I'm not all about draining the swamp. Let's be real, if you drain the swamp, we have, we're going to have bigger problems. We need to figure out what the solutions need to be and whether the leaders we have can adapt to those solutions. And if they can't, then I think we definitely need change. But I think everybody in this room acknowledges that what we are doing is not working, and this is why we need change.
All right, Ms. Johnson, same question, please.
You know, anytime you have a human, you have mistakes. So, is our leadership perfect? Absolutely not. Is there room for improvement? Yes, there is. We, um, by the third school board meeting in two thousand fourteen, we accepted the superintendent's recommendation. By the fifth meeting, the CFOs, the IT, we continued to work through that. We did pick Mr. Russell as a superintendent, if we're talking about him. And, um, what I liked was by the third week after two years of complaints and housekeeping, he held him to the contract. He did exactly what we needed to. Is there room for improvement? Absolutely, always, in any business, in any situation. Our kids are growing, our teachers are growing, we've recognized we've got some deficiencies this year, but what you're failing, we're still a B. That is no shame, that is above average. So I don't want to make it shameful when we're still holding where we were at, and now I'd like to see us be number one in Florida and a leader for the nation.
Thank you, all right, question number six, Mr. Cologne, you will begin. What would you do to increase graduation, graduation rates within Volusia County?
Well, I think I've already said it out there, and it's academies are the secret, when students have a relevant education, they graduate. That, I'm not throwing a number of ninety-four percent at, for any other state or national, that's right here in Volusia County, it's an effective method for graduation, number one. Number two, we need to be able to identify the students that are at risk or failing. Right now, we're not working on our lower-end students, we're bringing wonderful Cambridge Academies, things that serve the higher end of the students. Our lower end of our students are failing. Statistically, as someone who deals with data a lot, and I do call out a lot of numbers, we can figure out who these children who are at risk are when they're in sixth grade. And then how do we focus on these children? What are their family home makeups? What were the graduation? See, I came from an area in Miami that was like that. A lot of the kids in my district here in Deltona are much of how I grew up, and I can identify with that. What would it take for someone to come up to Ruben who got in trouble and say, "You know what, Ruben? You, you would be a good employee, later hire me to work for Miami Dade County Schools from the time I was fourteen to nineteen." That's how I think we can make a difference.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson?
Well, we have the highest graduation rate we've ever had, does that mean we sit on our laurels? Absolutely not, we are now at eighty percent. The state is at eighty-two percent, that's our newest numbers from our ten high schools. We started out, when I came in four years ago, at sixty-seven percent. We did one amazing thing, kids would come in, they'd be mad at school, or at the principal, or at their teacher, and they'd say, "I want to drop out," we'd say, "Okay." We stopped that nonsense, they now have to talk to an administrator and a guidance counselor. And as a result, we figure out, maybe they're just mad at their teacher, maybe they had a bad day, and we talk them into staying. We work with them, we do have programs in place to start watching them from elementary school on. So we have programs to see, the Cambridge program I was part of, because our kids were leaving Deltona to go to the Ivy programs and to the east side. And the Cambridge program is in both Deltona High Schools. I'm very proud of that, that we were able to get that for our students, so they had an opportunity to excel and get free college, it's amazing.
Thank you, Mr. Mann?
I took the ASVAB test in nineteen eighty-five, and I was the only one who looked like myself to pass it the very first time. With that, I ended up joining the US Army, and that's pretty bad, for only one person who looks like me to pass that test. So, what I mean, and how does it get better? We have to, we have to have an idea, the acronym IDEA, we have to inspire, we have to inspire our kids, we have to inspire the teachers again, we have to, uh, D, we have to dream. Kids always dream, they dream of being firemen, they dream of being police officers, they dream of being astronauts, whatever it may be. They need, we got to educate them and give them a fair education, help them all the same, and then that last one, A, is achieved. We got to make sure that the students achieve and that they're relevant, they understand that they are important, and that they can do something. Once somebody tell them that, they can get that spark behind them, and they can go and achieve and become great, something great and do great things, thank you.
All right. Because our candidates have not taken all of their time and they've been responding, we're going to be able to get a couple more questions in. So...
Wait, wait a minute. Did you get a chance to answer that question?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, you did. Okay. All right. Thank you. Sorry.
That's quite all right. I understand. I have a cheat sheet up here. I never have. All right. So, the next question is, in November, an amendment to the Florida Constitution, number eight, would require term limits for school board, two to four years, from two to four. Two, four-year terms. Excuse me. What is your opinion on this proposal? And Ms. Johnson, you would start.
Okay.
We're back to the beginning.
I actually supported it publicly in the paper, and I'll tell you why I said that. If that's the only one on the amendment, it's not, though. They doubled it and tripled it up.
Yes, they did.
Just so we're clear. Because if you're... If you're in a position too long, sometimes it becomes part of the problem instead of the solution. You need new, fresh eyes looking. And I think eight years is a very reasonable amount of time to... Because this is hard work, by the way. You... I'm in my schools every four to six weeks. So, I wanna know how... I wanna do this well. I wanna do this with excellence. So, what you have to do is if I... I'm in there too long, I might get complacent. So, personally, I know for me, I'm okay with those term limits because I know I've run the job well and with excellence.
Thank you.
In engineering, we have something that's called second set of eyes, which means somebody else needs to look at it after you look at it. And I do agree that the term limits, two, four-year terms, is good because we don't need the same people doing all the same things. And you do need a fresh set of ideas and a fresh set of eyes. And perhaps that person, if they did a great job, maybe they can do something bigger, better. So, I'm okay with that, and thank you.
So, seeing as we all agree with the amendment, let's talk about why this amendment came about. There are districts down south where money has such a big role in school board elections that the minute the incumbent files again, they get millions and millions of dollars into their account. And they make it virtually impossible to be in the larger districts. That is the reason why this amendment came about, because they could never change the personnel because the money flew in to their campaign. So, to answer your question, yes, I support the term limits. But I think it's important everybody's educated to understand that it was designed more for those districts where money flows in, corporate money, PAC money, versus districts that, you know, small districts like ours.
All right. And this is the final question before closing statements. What is at the top of your list in making changes? And we start with Mr. Mann.
Teachers pay. Teachers pay. By the way that I mentioned, teachers pay. I'm looking, and my top thing is to increase the pay of teachers. We need to get their money up. We need to get their... The things that they work for, because they work so hard. I coach, and I've been coaching soccer a long time. And I'm sick and tired of seeing teachers bring their kids to soccer practice, and then they have to bring their graded homework with them, and they can't even watch your kid practice soccer. Or even worse, so on Saturday, they can't even watch them play their game. I've had kids to score their very first goal, and their parent, their mom or their dad, is there grading papers, and they missed the whole thing, and they hope that somebody got it on video. So, again, did I say teachers pay?
Mr. Cologne?
My first priority is school safety. The district's done a great job. The forty-eight percent of our schools have been... Created a single point of entry. However, I am running for District Five, and only two of fifteen of my schools have had that done yet. So, school safety is first of all. And I will point out that, yes, they've done a great job. I just wonder why we didn't start in the most vulnerable area. The next thing is curriculum. We have gotta go find a curriculum that's working somewhere else. We have the advantage that there are districts that have been using them for two and three years. So, we're not buying something that is brand-new. We can go find something that is proven with the input of all of our stakeholders. And the third thing is the graduation rate. While we boast that it's the highest it's ever been, we have the second lowest graduation rate in the state of Florida of counties with greater than twenty-five hundred graduates. We are the fourteenth-largest county. Okay? Taxpayers, that is the second lowest. Houston, we have a problem. We could boast that. If mediocrity is what you want, well, we can boast on that. But we really have to make changes on that.
Ms. Johnson?
My main priority will be the DCD. I mentioned it earlier, but I started traveling last summer, actually, summer before, a little bit. But then, last summer, I started showing up in boardrooms. I wanted those fifty-five counties that are paying for twelve to know they weren't alone. And the attitude has been, "Well, we can never change that." Well, I brought four-point-two million dollars back to the school classrooms from a compression line item as a result of taking on the state of Florida and the funding formula. They're gonna have to figure this out. When we send a dollar to Tallahassee and they send us back ninety-six cents, that equates to over ten million dollars a year. Mr. Mann wants to raise the teachers' pays. I agree. That's a three percent raise without even negotiating. We have to find the money. To say we'd like to give them more money, they gave us a hundred dollars per student this year. Doesn't that sound great? They put chains on all of it but forty-four cents, so we got a twenty-nine-thousand-dollar raise in our money that we could give teachers raises. To give a one percent raise, it's three-point-two million dollars.
Thank you. All right. We will now allow the candidates to have their two-minute closing statements. And we will start with Ms. Johnson and go right down. Then, I have a few announcements. So, I would ask you all to stay seated when you're finished. But you have your two-minute closing now.
Well, I'm a leader, but I'm gonna follow because I did like them standing. Look, I have been on the school board since two thousand fourteen. I have three children I adopted, and they were in public schools. And I saw nothing that I was criticizing necessarily. I just saw this gentle decline, and it went to a C rating. We have raised our graduation rates. We're two percent behind the state now. We're at eighty percent. The state is eighty-two percent. So, we're getting closer. Do we have room for improvement? Absolutely. Funding, I've already mentioned that. We need Tallahassee to take the chains off of our dollars. Give us some freedom and let our teachers teach. I would like the adopted school and adopted classroom initiated. We've got the schools going. We have over half of our schools. Deltona High just got adopted by Bethune-Cookman because they have a culinary arts program, CTE, starting. I do wanna see vocational. I started my career in vocational. In high school, I was bused to another county, and I became a certified nursing assistant. Then, I became a CMT, NEMT, a registered nurse, and then a physician assistant. I want our kids... Not every child has been set today. Not every child is ready for college. One of mine didn't wanna go to college right away. Wasn't quite ready. Now, she works for Apple. Pretty rockin' awesome job. My son is going to college, my older son. My little, younger ones going to the Cambridge Academy at Deltona High. I love being part of something that affects positive change. I've said it more than once. Volusia County schools are the best-kept secret ever. Nobody knows what we do. Even I can't keep up. But I am so proud to be a part of a culture. I love our teachers. They saved my children's lives before I adopted them. I believe in our public schools. I do see our future, and I wanna be, like I said, number one in Florida and a leader for the nation. And we are working towards that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mann, two minutes.
It should mean something to be a product of Volusia County schools. And I do believe I'm the only candidate at this table that is a product of Volusia County schools. Not only myself, but all three of my daughters are who are in the audience. Two of them graduated from Deltona High already, and my youngest one, she's a senior this year. And she's the class president for the twelfth grade. So, I am vested into Volusia Public Schools. And Volusia Public Schools, yes, they need some work. And I think that I'm a person who has that compassion to be able to do the work that's needed to help us to definitely get to the next level. You know, as I graduated, I went to the Army at age seventeen because no one, not even one counselor, talked to me about college. Didn't tell me anything. If I would've listened to that, I probably would've worked at a factory. I probably would've been on the streets. Who knows what would've happened? But I'm sure that I would not have been an engineer at the Kennedy Space Center. So, we need someone to get behind us and drive us and tell us that we can do things. And that's what I believe we can do here at Volusia County Public Schools. We can make them number one. Not only that, I've been teaching kids. I teach them from being a preacher, I'm a minister. I've been preaching for fifteen years. I've been coaching for fifteen years from the youth level all the way up to Bethune-Cookman University as well. So, I have experience. I have that leadership. Also, as I've worked at the Kennedy Space Center, I continue to work there. I'm in a leadership position. I'm probably what you would call the hidden figure. You're probably looking at the first lead electrical engineer that looks like me that worked at the Kennedy Space Center. So, I had some big things that have happened in my life. I also drove this really cool car. Well, you could call it a car, but actually, it's a crawler. That big giant crawler with the big wheels. Those are things that I got a chance to do. And I... And I'm saying that not to brag of it, but I'm humbled to be able to have something like that. A little kid who graduated from Dland High School, who grew up near Volusia County, was able to do things like that. Thank you so much.
Mr. Cologne, two minutes.
So, I realize that I've brought a lot of things out today. But my thing is focusing on the things that we can change. Let's do the math, everyone in this room, really quick. The DCD. In order to change the DCD, you need a majority vote in the House and the Senate, correct? Okay? Fifty-seven percent of representatives in the district in the Florida House represent a district that benefits from that formula. So, seven percent would have to cut funding to their schools to get a majority. In the Senate, seventy-three percent of the Senate represents a district that benefits from the DCD formula. Now, if we did the math really quick, we'd realize, what are the chances that will ever change? Let's focus on the things we can change, on our graduation rate, on the fact that in my district, District Five, seventy-nine percent of our schools are C schools. You can be happy about the district's beat. You're invited to the party, but it's not because you did your part. These are the things we need to look at. We need to look and see how we can get these partnerships, increased partnerships with businesses. I look forward to going out and knocking on businesses' doors. Okay? Saying the IBM wants it. I've got a school. Will you help us? Will you partner with us? As I did with Florida Hospital, my employer. So, that... Those are the things that I plan on being. The second thing I promise teachers is I will be there. It is not uncommon for my principals to tell me they have never seen their school board member in the last one year, two years. Okay? It is not uncommon for that. I go to the schools, and they have no idea who it even is. So, I promise I will be there because if you're not there speaking... It's one thing to say to somebody, "Hey, how's it going?" And they're gonna go, "Oh, it's fine." Or you say, "Hey, what's the one thing you need in your classroom?" I asked that of a teacher, and you know what she said? Tables that don't wobble so my STEM students' projects don't fall over. Okay? Well, you can't find that out if you're not there where they are, and that's one thing. And my two children are now Volusia County school students. And when I say education is not one size fits all, they're doing the Volusia Virtual. My daughter has epilepsy, and when she was at spirit elementary, they could not safely meet her accommodations. So, I look forward to being on the cutting edge of innovation as it relates to our district.
Thank you very much. Let's give all of you... And I then thank you to give each of you a round of applause because I think this room is hot, and I'm always cold. So, you've stuck... You've stuck with us. And what a wonderful group of candidates we have with an interest in our children and the schools in Volusia County. You can't ask for anything more except going to the polls on... For the primary because that's where it makes a difference. Remember that these races are all nonpartisan. And so, if you don't vote in the primary, you may not have a seat. And you need to get every one of your neighbors, every one of your relatives, anyone you know anywhere in the county. And on twenty-eighth of August, say, "If you haven't voted, get up and go." All right. That's sort of my bandwagon. But I'm supposed to tell you that we have a couple of cards in the back. One talks about the importance of the primary. That's the yellow one. And then, the other one is this card I held up. It gives you early voting dates. The primary election, as you know, is Tuesday, August twenty-eighth. Early voting begins on Saturday, August eighteenth, and runs through Sunday, August twenty-sixth. And the early voting sites are open from eight in the morning until five in the afternoon. It also will give you the general election. On the back is a website we'd like all of you to go to and tell your friends to do the same. It is vote411.org. We sent questions to all of the candidates and asked them to respond. When you go to vote411.org and put in your address, your ballot, your individual ballot, will pop up on the screen, and you can see who you're going to be voting for for the primary. And then, you click on it, and you can see the answers to their questions. It is extremely helpful. Judges are there, school board candidates, county council, all of the nonpartisan races. And then, if you belong to a party, your particular party races will be there as well. Also, in the back, we love people to come and join us at the League of Women Voters. We pride ourselves being nonpartisan. We don't endorse politicians, candidates, nor do we support parties. We do work very hard on issues, and that leads me to a presentation tomorrow. The ACLU is having an amendment presentation tomorrow at City Island Library, beginning at one-thirty. And the League of Women Voters is doing the presentation. We are trying to get to as many organizations and individuals as possible to explain these amendments. The first five are relatively clear. The next eight, that the Constitutional Revision Commission put on the ballot, are not single item. Some of them have three issues. Some have two. And you need to know before you vote, if you vote yes, what does it mean? And if you vote no, what does it mean? And we, as a league, try to do that for our community. So, tomorrow, one-thirty, City Island Library, ACLU, and our, the league, is doing the presentation. Now, I just have one party word. Remember that it is your right, but more importantly, it is your responsibility to vote. Your vote does count, and not voting is not an option. It is incumbent upon each of us, regardless of our political persuasion or lack thereof, to vote and encourage our neighbors and our friends to do the same. So, when you leave here today, walk out that door, tell everyone you see. August twenty-eighth is really important. Get out and vote. Thank you all.